All right, so now is the time for any concerned citizen to speak to the council on an item that is not on the agenda. Gentlemen, step up to the microphone.
Good evening. Peter Bardole, Chuck Winhold, we're representing Green County Chamber and Hot August Nights. We're, I guess, coming before the city council. We'd like to have Hot August Nights on August 13th and just want to make sure what we need to do with the city to work with you and to make that happen. It'll probably be a little different than normal. Chuck can talk to a little bit more to that.
Yeah, some of the things we're going to do a little bit different this year, since a lot of it's sponsor-driven, since we're not going to worry about asking sponsors, so we're not doing the free t-shirts or any of the awards. It's just going to be kind of a more casual cruise-in. The Chamber's going to work on doing the food like normal, but they've got some different things, rules that they have to deal with with public health from the state side. But we're looking at doing the same kind of layout on the closing of the streets, but spacing the cars out a little bit more, so there's more room for people to walk around and stuff. But I guess the main thing is we want to make sure you guys feel comfortable with us doing it still. I know later on in the month, you know, we're still looking at doing, you know, Bell Tower, the block party and stuff, so we thought, we just want to make sure, you know, you guys feel comfortable with us having the event and having your support in that.
That I think sounds good.
And as we get, you know, we'll let you know a little bit more, but like I say, we're going to, you know, space the cars out a little bit more. A lot of these events have gotten canceled because a lot of them are tied to their festivals, things like that. And it would be nice to have, again, it's just, you know, the same kind of thing, the Thursday night, you know, and who knows? It could be a lot of people, or it might not be very many, so. But it's just an opportunity for people to get out and kind of have the same kind of thing as we normally do, just not all the extra things.
Do you have any vendor booths or anything lined up yet?
No, and usually we don't have any other things other than the Chamber doing what they do. The VFW usually does something on their own, too, so.
Who do we think would be the best person or persons for them to work with? You know, it sounds like you guys have a plan.
Right. The only thing would be is if there is something, you know, say we do have a spike in cases at that time, yeah, obviously, we would cancel the event at that time, but.
Well, I mean, even with the event going forward, like, you know, just so all the bases are covered and stuff like that, I wonder who would be the...
Pete's a part of the EOC, working with Public Health, Becky Wolf, and so he's pretty well informed on the latest and greatest, and so I feel pretty comfortable that he's in the know on what the recommendations are.
And the main thing we'll have to do is we do have to deal with, you know, with the street closure, too.
Sure.
So that'll go through the Street Committee and stuff. But it's going to be the same as it always is, you know, half-block on some of the blocks and then, you know, all the way down here.
Sure.
And that's worked out in the past where the city guys drop the barricades off and then we move them at 1:00 and, you know, we work with all the downtown businesses to let them know what's going on, so.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for having it.
Yeah, all right. I think our biggest thing was just we wanted to make sure you guys are supporting, supportive of it and so we can move on.
I think along the Bell Tower and stuff like that, you know, we have to have some semblance of something.
Yeah.
You know, even if it's parsed down a lot, I think it's a good thing.
Something to give some normalcy back.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to consent items. Move to approve.
Second.
On your consent, though, it said council member to be appointed to the Bell Tower Festival, or no, Bell Tower, the Bell Tower Foundation. You go to that, Matt?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just so it's for the record that he's on that this year. And they meet tomorrow night. Congratulations.
Thank you, Matt.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Zemalik?
Aye.
Under new business, item A, consider approval of contract for Region 12 Council of Governments for Professional Services for Upper Story Housing Conversion Application.
Hi, good evening, how are you? We're here. This application, what this would do is we would be working with Chris Steele on his proposal to apply for IEDA, for CDBG funds from IEDA to promote the upper-story housing project that he has proposed here at the last meeting. So what this would allow us to do, it would allow Region 12 to create the necessary environmental review documents that would have to be submitted with the application. We would work with the city and the developer and the owner on making sure that all project information was promptly and correctly uploaded and that the grant was submitted in a timely fashion.
And this is for all of them, right? There were seven?
Up to seven units. He is still looking at exactly how many buildings. There's an option for one, two, or three buildings to be included in this program, and as of noon today, I think he was still on the fence. He's crunching some numbers and talking to the state and trying to see what the best project would be, and then that's what I think he's going to go for.
And then Region 12 would be a resource for him?
Mm-hmm.
Chamber?
Yep, till the project's complete.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Zemalik?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Item B, set public hearing for CDBG Upper Story Housing Conversion Application.
This will just be a follow-up to what you used to prove. It's one of the steps, one of the many steps involved to apply for this grant. So you're just setting a public hearing at this point? July 14.
I move to set the public hearing.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Zemalik?
Item C, consider motion setting public hearing on proposed zoning amendment to allow dwelling units on upper levels of buildings in the CBC, CBD, CDBG district as permitted use.
So in reviewing the grant for that second-story living, we discovered that upper-story residential units are not allowed in Jefferson, and we have several in Jefferson. So we held a P&amp;Z meeting and discussed it, spoke with Bob. The best action to take is to modify the CBC district in permitted uses to allow one or more dwelling units above the first floor of the building. There's some language in there in the intent that says limited, single-family residential. Modify that to limited residential units. And then further on down in the special exceptions, it says dwellings, adding to dwellings, dwelling and dwelling units on the first story or in the basement. Or actually, no, that's exceptions, that's a special exception. Dwelling and dwelling units on the first story or in the basement of a building. This makes it so that we can actually apply for the grant and then makes those apartments that are currently in use legal.
I move to approve that.
I'll second.
Zemalik?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
And Aaron Holtz?
Aye. Is that also July 14?
Yeah, we need to know that. I think that's right, July 14.
Yes. And just for your information, right after that public hearing, we'll be asking you to adopt first reading of the ordinance. And I think your timeline, Nick, is such that you probably will ask the council to waive second and third readings as well, so.
Right.
I mean, just a little more backup. I mean, the units that are there now, I mean, most of those are grandfathered in because they've been there forever, so.
Yeah, and you know I don't like grandfathered-in word.
And that's not going to work for your grant, I understand that, but still.
Was the idea behind this that at the time, those were all used for storage, or?
No, so what would have happened, I would imagine, is through the evolution of zoning and through the evolution of the city of Jefferson, that kind of just got thrown in there, I wouldn't say as a blanket zoning, but possibly. It does allow for some dwelling units, as you can see. The intent behind your CBC is you don't want first-floor residential units. That's your highly condensed business district, and residential units there, that's not what that's designed for. That's why you have residential areas. However, with these upper-story apartments, that's how you get these old buildings to be able to cash flow, and then it also puts the bodies down on the streets to go right downstairs and into that business.
Right.
Your question was, why was it originally that way?
Right, why didn't they want people living above their stories?
Well, originally, back in the day, they were. In fact, it was probably the building owner that was living in it.
Yeah, right.
But most, a lot of these, you know, the soon-to-be public house, that's six apartments up there. Homestead has the potential of six up there as well. Just somewhere on down the line, things changed, and we're kind of going back to it. I think the motion and everything's already been done.
You have a motion? I so moved to approve this.
I thought we did.
Or the, yes, we did the last one, yeah, because Bob talked after, sorry.
Okay.
Yep, we're done. Yep, we're close.
Close voting discussion.
Sorry.
I talked too long.
Okay, now we're ready.
All right, item D, consider approval of plat survey to combine vacant lot parcel A, Lot 9, with Lot 8, Jefferson Land and Loan Company, second addition.
Okay, so this would be a plat of survey between Kathryn Rice, who lives at 700 West Lincoln Way, and Seth Carver, who lives at 704 West Lincoln Way. They went partners in on the dilapidated property that sat in between them at 702 West Lincoln Way, tore it down, and now they would like to split the lot in half. If you remember, this was a neighborhood improvement incentive program project as well.
You have any issues with this, Nick, or it's no problem?
No, it's been through Mike Palmer, City Engineer, Bob Schwartzkopf, and myself, and it's a non-conforming lot, so it makes sense.
Okay. And right now, there's nothing on it?
Right, so that would have been tore down approximately four to five months ago.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Zemalik?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Hi to me, consider approval of plat of survey to convey parcel A of Lot 2 of subdivision to Larry and Brenda Brown.
So this is a parcel split between Richard and Carol Grower at 909 South Elm and Larry and Brenda Brown at 109 Harding Road. If you're not familiar with the area, if you look at the aerial, you can see it's a densely wooded area, that's where that ravine goes through at Highway 4, and the Growers own a section of it on the other side of the ravine that then they then have, that has been cleared of trees, that they then have to come all the way around and melt. It really isn't a useful, there's no way anybody can make any use of it other than the Browns just adding a section to their yard.
She is from you on this?
None from me, Mike Palmer, City Engineer, Bob Schwartzkopf.
I move we allow this.
Second.
Jackson?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
And Zemalik?
Aye.
Item F? Item F is consider approval of city administrator's contract. So it's basically the same contract as last time. It'll start July 1st and June 30th of next year. Waging benefit, recommended 3.5% increase. I think everybody had the opportunity to weigh in on comments, suggestions, everybody seemed to be comfortable with it at the time, so.
I'll make a motion we consider approval.
I'll second.
Zemalik?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Item G, Thomas Jefferson Gardens Annual Update.
Hello, my name's Mary Weaver. I think I know most of you. I have a lot of my board members with me tonight. I want them to at least stand up so you can see them. They're waving. We really came to thank you tonight. A lot of changes have happened in the Thomas Jefferson Gardens in the last 10 years. There's some new faces that you might not know our history, but about 10 and 1/2 years ago, right about in September, Wallace Teagarden came to the Board of Supervisors and said that he wanted to erect a statue very similar to the one that was of Lincoln. And the supervisors looked around the courthouse square and referred him to Tom Polkeen, because as many of you know, Tom has a big interest in Thomas Jefferson. And so from that point, a statue was secured, and then we started working on the gardens. Originally, the insurance building was going to be right there, but we tore down three old buildings, it's hard to remember, but it was only 10 years ago. And if you'll think about when the overpass was made, a lot of that soil that they needed to insert the pillars came over to the Thomas Jefferson Gardens. So it's been a big project, it's morphed over the years, but we really came to say thank you because you trusted us enough, and some of the same people are here, to loan us the money to take over the debt that the Chamber had incurred, and we had some help from the Home State Bank, we had help from Grow Green County, and now we have a beautiful garden that attracts business as well as tourists to our community. It's, we've done several things this year, and we listed them all out for you. I'm not going to go through the whole list, I hope you looked at it. And we just want to say thank you. We want to earn our salt, you give us $20,000 every year, and we appreciate it very much. And John is going to tell you what we're going to do with the money that you're going to give us beginning July 1st. But we want to keep on doing things. We want to be dynamic, we want the gardens to grow, because that helps businesses come here, and that helps our tourists. So John's going to talk to you about the money.
I think everyone's got the pie charts. Okay, there's two this year. One is the Education and Welcome Center, and it shows basically the breakdown of this last year, this last fiscal year, where the money has gone and where the money has come in for the, just the building. I broke it down in two parts, we got basically two budgets, the building part and the gardens part. As far as the building is concerned, much of it is the Chamber debt that we assumed. And our goal is, in about a week, to pay that off. We're down to the point where one more payment and we're done with the loan that the Chamber incurred for us, and no more interest each month, and so hopefully that'll take care of a little bit of our crunch on the building budget. The rest of the building budget basically is dealing with weekend people to answer the phone, to greet visitors on the weekend, since our agreement with the city council is to be open when the bell tower's open. And so we need weekend workers there to greet people, to clean the building now with the pandemic as people come in, and so that's another big part. Plus the insurance, as the gardens have grown and as the building has grown and has improved, so has our insurance bill. And we were kind of shocked with the expense of the insurance this year, so we're going to be looking out and seeing what else we can do for that. So those are the big expenses with the building, besides utilities, electricity, which isn't going to go away. Volunteers, that's on the board, is going to take care of the snow removal this next year. We did spend money on, we spent $200 on snow removal, most of it in February, I think it was. So that's going to be taken care of, taken over by volunteers. So that's the building aspect of it. The garden aspect, we had two large expenses this year, and this money came from donations that we used for the gardens. One was the musical instrument, we've got a third musical instrument now in the gardens that was just put in a couple of weeks ago, and so that occurred quite a bit of an expense, but again, donations paid for that. The other large expense was a garden shed. Because of the possible merger with Jefferson Main Street and the Chamber, they needed some supply space. And in the building, we were using the back furnace room for garden space. Well, we thought we're going to move all that garden material out now because they need it for supplies, paper supplies, because they might use the other office space in the building for the new person that's going to be running, whatever the name's going to be. And so we built a garden shed and moved all the garden supplies into the garden shed. So that became an increase in expenses that we had to take over. Do you have questions? Chances are, I can't answer them, but I'll sure try.
I'm sure, like everywhere else, all programs are kind of on hold, but your outside things that you've been able to do may lend itself. Is there anything coming up or potentially coming up where you could have something outside and spaced appropriately, or?
Well, again, because of the issues that we've had this year, we had to limit ourselves. We were going to have a concert again, that was canceled because of the issue. We're thinking about having a fall gala and possibly Burning of the Deed, and invite people for that.
Burn the mortgage.
Oh, sorry. Burn the mortgage instead of the deed, we'll keep the deed. So we're thinking about having that, but we've been pretty limited. The workarounds outside, we have done some changes. We redid the gardens behind the statue, it was completely redone. We're thinking about redoing the west side a little bit, putting in more preennials, so that's on the agendas eventually. But right now, we want to get, taking care of the debt.
Oops. Well, I'm just, I won't get too close. I'm just, might respond to you, dear, and what I'm saying. We seem to have a lot of visitors, even though we don't have busloads or tourists right now. I was there on Sunday, and some people that I happen to know from Perry, she came out and she said, "We heard there was a nice, there were nice flowers here, and we just needed to get out and get away." And they're outside, and so they feel relatively safe. So even though we can't say we had a lot of bus tours, we are picking up some tourists.
Fantastic. And then the fountain that you guys have put in?
Yeah, the fountain was in, it's been in a year now. That's basically a memorial fountain, again, all donations, especially memorial money for people who've inspired us and we've loved, and so we got that built, but there's upkeep for that. And all of a sudden, you know, we got algae growing in there, and so we got to clean that out, and so there's issues that we got to take care of and maintain the water. The other thing is...
We have a frog!
We have a frog! That is around once in a while.
We have birds.
And we have birds, we have a lot of birds, and we have to scrub off Tom a little bit. Yeah, he gets messy once in a while. So anyway, we're growing the food, the produce that we have out of the farmer's garden on the east side, all that food goes to the food pantry, and we've had, we took some peas and lettuce and onions last week there. When we get our tomatoes going, we'll send tomatoes out there and potatoes. So we try to help as much as we can with the food pantry as well. I really appreciate the council and Roxanne for listening to my sorrow when I bring in the bills that need to be taken care of, so I appreciate that.
Just going to commend the outside appearance, everyone's been doing fantastic work, obviously, where they look amazing right now, and so I wanted to commend you on that, and then also enjoying your social media presence here this summer with some of your tips about harvesting the herbs and different things. It's been, I like the educational component, I'd love to see more of that, I think it's been, it's been great. It's a nice resource.
And again, we tried new programs, we have the plant doctor, but again, because of the situation that we're in, we're pretty limited on that now. We had a guy come show us about birds, and we have plans for maybe him coming back again and talking about feeding birds during the summer and attracting birds.
Sounds like you're desperate for speakers.
He was good. So anyway, we have those plans, you know, that's going on, so. Hopefully, you know, things will settle a little bit and we'll be able to move on. So like everybody else, without bus tours that we've lost, and without graduation receptions and wedding receptions, you know, we've, like everybody else, we're trying to get by.
Couple of weeks ago, we had a pair of... I'm about to see you, Roxanne. I can't.
I can't.
Just because I know Matt's interested in this, we did have a couple cedar waxwings who just devoured our service berry, so. Yeah, it was, it was so fun. We couldn't, we couldn't catch them to get a picture, but we were there and we enjoyed it.
That's a great post to make, or a great note to make about native species and how appreciated they are by wildlife, so. Fun.
Thank you. All right. Move on to reports. Jim's not here tonight. Roxanne? Bob?
No report.
Mike?
First of all, they're gonna start, they're gonna start mosquito spraying this Thursday. And they'll go every Thursday and Tuesdays, and the wind has to be right, no more than 10 miles an hour. So they'll be doing that. If you're getting calls, now you can answer. And finally, thank you for a nice evaluation. I know it takes a lot of time to do that and reapproving my contract again.
That's it? All right. Harry?
In your, in your pocket, you received the notes of our Water, Streets, and Sewer Committing, a meeting of this past week, this past Tuesday. Maybe, I don't know, this is not necessarily a highlight, but we did discontinue water shut-offs through the COVID period. But at our, this past meeting, letters went out to folks that did have some, did have past dues, and they've also delayed water cutoffs on. There will be fees, late fees added to the June bill, and we will start the cutoff process on July 1. So there weren't a lot on the list. I mean, that it's, I guess, I was a little surprised that there weren't more on the list, so I don't think it's gonna be a real huge issue, and there's not gonna be a lot of shut-offs as a result of this. But felt like it was time to get back in the swing of things and move forward on that. I think on the balance of it, you can probably read that, we are talking about potential increases in the sanitation rates and that sort of thing. It's been a while since we've done it. Those are under some real pressure right now, and a pretty nominal increase, I think, should, would help us out quite a bit. So that's why those talks are continuing, and you will, you will hear more about it, I know, at a future meeting. That's all I've got.
Nothing much. We'll touch base with the Seaborns afterward and see how everything's gone and get some feedback from folks these next week or two here, and see how our combo services are going. Looking forward to seeing that, but that's all I have. Darren?
The rest are met in person for the first time in a long time, and that was good. And I guess maybe a silver lining of all this is they got a lot of things done that the painting, the replacement of water fountains, and especially that Delta Dental came through with a grant and had that all put in, and they could do all that stuff because no one was in there. I guess the main thing that they came away from that meeting is if, what they would do if someone, you know, that they find out someone contracted in was in there and they have a plan in place for that. So I think Denny is doing well. Oh, and they got the pool cover off and with very minimal cost. I, I think that maybe some of that expense was coming, that it did take the volunteers probably half an hour to do that and get that all rolled up. And it took, you know, probably half a dozen people or more. So I think if that company had sent people down, you know, and they were all getting paid whatever an hour and doing all that, that's probably where the cost would've come in, not the difficulty of it, just the time factor of it. And they maybe had a few hiccups, but they learned some things. That pool cover's going to the company. It had some tears that, or maybe not tears.
Snags.
Snags that were still under warranty, I guess, that the company's gonna be, so they have that right now.
Nice. We shouldn't have any more bills for the cover now is what that amounts to.
Exactly.
To be able to do it in-house.
Yep.
And I believe they also redid the showers in the, at the swimming pool.
Yeah, right.
It's, it's nice. I mean, they work, they're a good stream, it's warm. It's nice to see those working again.
Right. Basically, they got all of the things on their to-do list done with this, so.
All right, thank you. Pat?
Yeah, we toured the REC building the other day for the potential move for the PD out there. Very nice facility, would work very well for us out there, but obviously, we'll get into further communication with them as we go down the road, so.
Sure.
Just wanted to update you on that a little bit.
All right, thank you. Dave?
Biggest thing I have is I gave you guys a handout. That's kind of the cat proposal that I think we could look at. I know there was a question on why I chose the dates I did. Those were just dates. We can change those. Let Bob look at it. I think pretty much most of this is already in Chapter 55 of our ordinances, so whenever Bob gets it figured out, we'll act on it then. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you. No report. For me, we're done.